Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Committee on Women and Gender Equity, joining me with Government Operations, State and Federal Legislation. At this time, please place your phone on vibrate or silent mode. If you want to submit testimony, send us the testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Anytime during this hearing, do not approach today. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. My name is Farah Lewis and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. I would like to thank my colleague Lincoln Ressler for co-chairing today, who was the Chair for Government Operations, State and Federal Legislation. Today's important hearing on Oversight: Update on Sexual Harassment, Best Practices and Policies in New York City. Sexual harassment is a form of sex discrimination that violates Title VII of the Civil Rights Act 1964, as well as New York state laws and local laws. Generally, sexual harassment is a form of gender discrimination and includes unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, and other verbal and physical conduct of a sexual nature. Street harassment is a form of sexual harassment that includes unwanted comments, gestures, or acts directed at someone in a public space without such person's consent. According to city officials, the NYPD and the New York Times, disturbing 14 women have reported getting punched out of nowhere by strangers since mid-March, with at least one attack resulting in a broken nose. These assaults represent a crime category that has risen to 13% over the past year. It is hard not to interpret these incidents within a broader context of increased misogyny and domestic violence. Moreover, a recent survey from the Pew Research Center reported that a third of women under the age of 35 report having been sexually harassed online. According to a 2016 Federal Equal Employment Opportunity Commission report, studies have found that only 6% to 13% of individuals who experience harassment follow up by filing a formal complaint. The estimated 87% to 94% of individuals who do not file formal complaints did so out of fear of reactions raging from not being believed or taken seriously to social ramifications, including personal or professional humiliation and possible damage to their careers and reputations. Today, we seek to learn how the best practices and policies of our local, state, and federal laws can help to protect all New Yorkers from sexual harassment. To that end, we look forward to hearing from representatives from the mayor's office to end domestic and gender-based violence, the City Commission on Human Rights, and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, as well as businesses, advocacy groups, labor unions, and other interested parties. I would like to thank the members of the administration, the advocates, and the members of the public, especially those whose lived experience have joined us here today. We appreciate your testimony. I would also like to thank members of my staff, Shona Duncan and Daniel Haridia, as well as our committee staff, Committee Counsel Sahar Mozami, and Senior Legislative Policy Analyst Kristi Dreyer for their work on this hearing. Thank you, and I will now turn it over to Chair Ressler for his opening remarks.
Thank you so much to Chair Lewis. I'm really appreciative of your leadership on this issue and for bringing us all together today on this most crucial of topics. The City of New York must have a zero tolerance policy for sexual harassment. This city would not function without the 330,000 people who show up every day to serve. From teachers to healthcare workers, from building inspectors to bridge inspectors and more, city workers are our heroes. And every single employee, every single city worker, deserves a workplace that is free of harassment. Unfortunately, Mayor Eric Adams has sent the message that sexual harassment is condoned in his administration. When one of his closest advisers, Tim Pearson, was accused of sexual harassment, multiple incidents that were witnessed by other employees and led to a mass exodus from the mayor's Office of Municipal Services Assessment, the mayor's only response was that there should be due process. The mayor did not say that, if true, this behavior is unacceptable. The mayor did not say he was concerned about the nature of the allegations. The mayor did not say there was a zero tolerance policy for sexual harassment in his administration. He certainly did not place anyone on leave while the matter was internally investigated. No, he didn't even conduct a proper investigation. The mayor's office claimed the incidents could not be substantiated because the survivor grew concerned about retaliation and was wary of an investigation led by one of the mayor's longtime former Borough Hall staffers. And then, when the survivor and another employee filed lawsuits against the sexual harasser, the mayor forced the law department to provide his friend, Tim Pearson, with taxpayer-funded representation. According to multiple accounts, the distinguished Judge Sylvia Hines Radex was forced out of her job as Corporation Counsel for the City of New York due to the skepticism that it would be, due to her skepticism, that it would be appropriate for the city to provide taxpayer-funded representation to this individual, Tim Pearson. It's hard to imagine how any city employee would feel comfortable reporting an incident of sexual harassment after watching the mayor staunchly defend his buddy, Tim Pearson. Last year, the city reported only 247 sexual harassment complaints in the entire city workforce. That's less than 1/10th of 1% of the entire city workforce and half the number of complaints that were reported prior to COVID. There is not great data on the extent of this problem, but some estimates say that close to 40% of women and 14% of men across the country have reported experiences of sexual harassment at work. And the Federal Equal Employment Opportunity Commission has estimated that only 6% to 13% of individuals who experience harassment file a formal complaint. So while each of those 247 complaints is indeed concerning, what's even more concerning are the complaints that are never reported, that are never investigated. The 2018 reform measures passed by the city council were a significant step in the right direction, that sexual harassment will not be tolerated at city agencies. But we must do even more to ensure that any employee who does experience harassment feels 100% confident that their report will be handled appropriately and that necessary action will be taken. The Sexual Harassment Working Group, a group of former staffers at the New York State Legislature who all experienced, witnessed, or reported harassment, conducted a thorough, comprehensive, and impressive review of state policies and issued a report with thoughtful and smart recommendations back in 2018. One of their recommendations was that there should be a, quote, "truly independent office" to oversee investigations and enforcement of harassment claims for employees of elected and appointed officials. The gross mishandling of the recent incidents at City Hall highlights just how urgent and necessary it is to have an independent agency charged with investigating claims of sexual harassment. This entity could ensure employees of elected officials can rely on fair, independent, and swift investigations, and we should work to make this happen as soon as possible. I'd like to thank again Chair Lewis, her team from the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Sahar and Kristi. I'd like to thank the governmental operations staff, Jasee Gonopathy and Erica Cohen for their hard work. And I'd just like to especially thank my Chief of Staff, Molly Haley, who is brilliant, and I really appreciate all her great work. Thank you so much, Chair Lewis.
Thank you, Chair Ressler. And now invite, sorry, I want to acknowledge Council members Riley Carr and Honey Fuzon Zoom. Thank you for joining us. I now invite the representatives from the administration to offer testimony. And I'll administer the oath. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Anyone else? Thank you, you all may begin.
Good afternoon, Chairs Lewis and Ressler, and members of Committees on Women and Gender Equity and Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. I am Sylvia Montalban, Deputy Commissioner and Chief Citywide Equity and Inclusion Officer at the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, commonly known as DCAS. I'm grateful for the opportunity to meet with you to discuss DCAS's citywide work to cultivate and sustain an equitable and diverse work environment that adheres to inclusive employment practices, including sexual harassment prevention. The work of my entire office, Citywide Equity and Inclusion, has expanded and evolved for several years, including under this administration. We've concentrated our efforts on promoting inclusivity, driving recruitment and retention, boosting engagement, and improving the city's equal employment opportunity and diversity, equity, and inclusion training portfolios, including sexual harassment prevention. At our core, we are deeply invested in improving the quality of work experiences for all city employees by fostering a safe and inclusive environment where all employees are granted the protections they are due. More than that, our commitment to equity and access are integral parts of fulfilling our agency's mission, making city government work for all New Yorkers. While we work closely with all city agencies, it is important to note that we do not have the authority of an enforcement agency, but we provide structure and the tools to help agency heads comply with their New York City Charter mandate. This mandate dictates that agencies do not discriminate against covered persons as prohibited by federal, state, and local laws. DCAS has led the charge in our municipal workforce to consistently raise awareness about rights, responsibilities, and resources to prevent all forms of discrimination, including sexual harassment, and to promote workplace civility, respect, and belonging for all. In doing so, we do not merely design initiatives to operationalize legislation or compile reports to meet mandates. We meet and exceed requirements in the relevant local laws by considering citywide priorities and the needs of the workforce. In accordance with the Stop Sexual Harassment in New York City Act, including Local Laws 92 and 97 of 2018, we issue reports annually that provide insights into how the mandated sexual harassment training is being conducted and provide a comprehensive accounting of sexual harassment complaints within city agencies. And since 2019, we've seen a promising trend overall in sexual harassment complaints as they decrease citywide. In fact, in fiscal year 23, we saw the number of complaints decrease by 10%. DCAS has also been complying with Local Law 101 of 2018 by distributing a voluntary climate survey to all city agencies to ascertain the general awareness of the city's EEO policy, including sexual harassment prevention, knowledge of prohibited conduct, and the ability to report it. DCAS has issued the citywide workplace climate survey twice since 2018, and we will do so again this summer. We will compile a corresponding report to share the findings. In addition to sexual harassment prevention training, we actively promote agencies' completion of mandatory trainings that encourage inclusivity, like the Power of Inclusion, which is especially designed to address matters related to the LGBTQI plus identity in the workplace and Everybody Matters EEO and Diversity and Inclusion Training for New York City Employees, which provides an overview of rights, responsibilities, and protections against discrimination under the EEO policy and 25 protected categories under New York City Human Rights Law. This training also focuses on principles of diversity and inclusion, the responsibility of managers and supervisors to report discrimination and harassment, including sexual harassment, bystander intervention, and protection from retaliation for filing a complaint or participating in an investigation of harassment or discrimination. We also offer additional training, such as bystander intervention, unconscious bias, microaggressions, and disability etiquette. Pursuant to Section 814.1 of the City Charter, we provide uniformed procedures and standards to agencies so they can effectively meet the needs of the municipal workforce. For instance, we work closely with the law department to host information sessions for city leaders to discuss their obligations under the City Charter and the city's EEO policy. We also provide guidance and compliance tools to bolster transparency about the discrimination complaint process, including creating documents, such as the EEO complaint process at a glance and reasonable accommodations at a glance. We host bi-monthly best practice meetings with agency EEO professionals to reinforce consistency in the application of the EEO policy, discuss industry developments, new legislation, complaint trends, investigation and reasonable accommodation principles, and agencies' mandated training completion status. We develop trainings for the EEO practitioner to hone their skills, including on intersectionality in EEO investigations and an upcoming one on trauma-informed investigations. We make periodic updates to the EEO policy, relevant guidelines, and accompanying trainings. We provide ongoing citywide guidance on accessibility matters and equity issues through consultations daily with agencies, and we review and approve the annual diversity and EEO plans submitted by agency heads, covering the agency's goals and strategies to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in the areas of workforce, workplace community, and race relations. We produce and host a bi-annual, week-long HR EEO conference, providing innovative resources to HR and EEO professionals on equitable and inclusive workplace practices. It is one of the first municipal conferences of its kind in the nation. Together, all these innovative initiatives help inform our approach to building and maintaining an equitable and inclusive workforce. We know that at the heart of city government are the people. We want all employees to know that, as an employer, the City of New York is committed to fostering a work environment where employees can thrive while feeling protected, valued, and respected. With that, we welcome continued engagement and support from the council to further our goals and to help ensure that the City of New York reflects the values that make us an employer of choice. Thank you, and at this time, I welcome any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, Chair Lewis, Chair Ressler, and committee members. I am Hillary Scravani, Senior Policy Counsel at the New York City Commission on Human Rights. Joining me today for questions is Policy Counsel Michael Griffin. Thank you for convening today's hearing on the critical issue of sexual harassment. The Commission has been a leader in the fight against sexual harassment for decades. Our agency enforces the New York City Human Rights Law, which is one of the broadest anti-discrimination laws in the country. The New York City Human Rights Law has robust protections, and the Commission vigorously enforces the law's gender-based harassment provisions. I will share a brief overview of the work of the Commission, the Human Rights Law's strong gender-based harassment protections, and our persistent efforts to prevent and address sexual harassment. More detail on this is in our written testimony. To fulfill the Commission's dual mandate of enforcement and education, the Commission's two largest units are the Community Relations and Law Enforcement bureaus. The Community Relations Bureau sits at the center of our prevention efforts and is responsible for outreach, education, and training. The Law Enforcement Bureau conducts testing, launches investigations, initiates complaints, enters settlements, and takes cases to trial to address violations of the Human Rights Law. Individuals in New York City who believe they have experienced discrimination or harassment and want to seek redress have two paths to vindicate their rights. The Human Rights Law specifies that individuals have the option to come to the Commission, or they can file a complaint in court. When a report is made to the Commission, those claims are assessed by staff in our Law Enforcement Bureau. Cases that are investigated by the Law Enforcement Bureau are often resolved by settlement agreements between the Commission and a covered entity. Matters that are not settled or mediated may be referred for administrative trial. Cases that the Commission can lead to individual damages, civil penalties, and policy changes that aim to prevent future discrimination and harassment. The Commission's settlements and decisions and orders demonstrate how our agency seeks to eliminate gender-based harassment and remedy the resulting harms. Before turning to those, I will briefly discuss the Human Rights Law and several provisions that resulted from the 2018 Stop Sexual Harassment in New York City Act. The City Human Rights Law prohibits gender-based harassment in the areas of employment, housing, and places of public accommodation. The legal term "gender-based harassment" includes sexual harassment under the Human Rights Law. Implementation of the Stop Sexual Harassment in New York City Act reinforced and amplified the Commission's commitment to combating sexual harassment through education and robust enforcement. I will now turn to these amendments to the Human Rights Law. The Stop Sexual Harassment in New York City Act placed an emphasis on the pervasive challenge of gender-based harassment in the workplace. Local Law 98 extended the Human Rights Law's protections against gender-based harassment to all employees, regardless of the size of the employer. And Local Law 100 extended the statute of limitations for filing claims of gender-based harassment with the Commission from one year to three years. The Stop Sexual Harassment in New York City Act was not only about changes to the law, it was also about raising awareness of individual rights and obligations. Several of the bills focused on ensuring that information about New Yorkers' rights and obligations is easily accessible. This work is central to the Commission's mandate. Pursuant to Local Law 94, the Commission has built out an extensive website with resources that explain sexual harassment and retaliation and provide concrete examples of what constitutes illegal conduct. These resources highlight how to address harassment, how to address sexual harassment as well, providing information about bystander intervention and steps to take if facing sexual harassment. Consistent with Local Law 95, the Commission created a downloadable poster and fact sheet regarding workplace harassment. In addition to including examples of harassment, they also have information on the venues where individuals can file claims at the federal, state, and local levels. Employers are required to display the poster and disseminate the fact sheet in English and in Spanish. These written resources are complemented by a free, interactive training as required by Local Law 96. This law requires most employers to provide their employees with this training or training with similar components annually. The training also satisfies New York State's sexual harassment prevention training requirements. Thus far in fiscal year 2024, the training has already been downloaded or viewed over a million times. The training and fact sheets are available in multiple languages. The Commission's staunch efforts to eradicate sexual harassment have long included public engagement. Reflecting this, the agency launched an extensive citywide campaign on workplace sexual harassment in print and on social media in April 2018. This included how to report to the Commission and message that any and all sexual harassment is against the law. The focus on sexual harassment prevention is not just part of written resources in our online training. Many of the Commission's live facilitated trainings contain discussion of sexual harassment protections. Several hundred trainings cover sexual harassment each year. In addition to the specific efforts to implement the Stop Sexual Harassment in New York City Act, the Commission has reached strong settlements and issued a recent decision and order holding employers accountable for sexual harassment. I will briefly mention a few of these cases. In one recent settlement, an individual complaint against a multinational fashion company led to a Commission investigation which uncovered persistent sexual harassment, retaliation, and failure of the company to act when they learned of the harassment. The settlement included $330,000 in damages and required revised policies that clearly define sexual harassment and an internal complaint procedure. The settlement will be monitored by the Commission. Another example resulted from a Commission-initiated investigation of a large news network where reports alleged a culture of pervasive sexual harassment and retaliation. The network agreed to pay $1 million in civil penalties and to waive forced arbitration in agreements for any claims brought under the City Human Rights Law. The network must now hold Commission-improved sexual harassment prevention and bystander training for all of its New York City employees and implement a new complaint procedure for discrimination and harassment complaints that allows for multiple levels of reporting. The Commission also settled cases with a transportation company, a clothing manufacturer, and a real estate management company over the last year. Each included damages and penalties, trainings, and policy changes. Finally, in a written 2023 post-trial decision, the Commission held an employer liable for continuous sexual harassment and retaliation. The complainant in that case was awarded over $300,000 in damages. The Commission also imposed a civil penalty of $250,000 on the employer and ordered written policies consistent with the City Human Rights Law. These are just some examples of the Commission's extensive enforcement. In closing, the Commission remains deeply committed to preventing and combating sexual harassment in New York City and ensuring that individuals who experience harassment know their rights and have venues for address. We appreciate the council's attention and commitment to addressing this issue, and we welcome your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start. I heard some of the statistics, but if we could reiterate it based off these questions that we have here. Could you provide us with the total number of sexual harassment claims that the Commission has received each year for the past seven years?
Thank you for your question, council member. So, taking a step back, before I get into the numbers, as you mentioned in your testimony, gender-based harassment, sexual harassment is a subset of gender discrimination. So prior to the Stop Sexual Harassment Act of 2018, our tracking was tracking gender discrimination claims as a whole. So we don't have the specific sexual harassment claims disaggregated, but beginning in 2019, I do have the data for the sexual harassment complaints as a subset of gender discrimination. So I can share with you that we've seen, that we saw an increase of people coming to the Commission and reporting gender-based harassment specifically, which covers sexual harassment. Beginning, the increase began in 2019 and proceeded. There was a steady increase from the whole number of reports beginning in 2019, and then in 2020 dipped a little bit. 2021 stayed consistent, but overall, we saw more people coming to the Commission with complaints of sexual harassment, specifically claims that were filed, excuse me, like claims that the Commission investigated and filed, went up following implementation of the Act, and which we believe was in part because of the increase in information and education about the right to be free from sexual harassment and resources.
You still didn't give me a number.
Yes.
So if we're saying 2019, 2020, 2021, we need numbers, thanks.
Yeah, so in 20, so looking at, I'll go back to, so all gender discrimination complaint claims in employment in 2016 was 124, 2017 117, fiscal year 2018 118. So kind of, you know, that consistent number. And then, starting in 2019, all gender discrimination complaints in employment went up to 177, and 135 of those were claims of sexual harassment. And again, I want to clarify, I mean, filed claims. So even though we don't have it disaggregated for those years before 2019, we can see that the total number of the sexual harassment complaints in 2019 was, you know, more than all of the gender discrimination complaints in the previous years, and comfortable saying that more people had been coming to us during that time.
All right, so of that 135 you just gave us, can you tell us how many of those cases have been investigated, adjudicated, rejected, or any other outcome?
Those, so those are the cases that had filed claims, and that's what our system tracks. So I don't have at my fingertips information on resolutions for those cases. Happy to follow up with you after the hearing with that. But yes, those are the claims that have been filed. And I can say generally that many of our claims are resolved by settlement, because once a claim is filed, that's after an investigation, that's after an investigation, and there's been the finding of probable, finding of probable cause. So that, those are complaints that have been pursued. And again, many are resolved by settlement. Some will, you know, if they don't settle, will proceed to, proceed to court.
It's really unfortunate that you have 135 complaints, and we don't know the outcomes of any of them. So it speaks to why we're having this hearing, and we have a major issue here, as my co-chair stated earlier. It's really unfortunate, we have no information to provide at a hearing today. My next question, Local Law 94 of 2018 required the Commission to post on their website resources about sexual harassment. Can you tell us where each information can be located and what is currently included in that post?
Yes, thank you for that question, Chair Lewis. As I indicated in my testimony, reaching New Yorkers with information about our law and making sure it's accessible is a cornerstone of our work. So as far as information on our website, we have a website, our Sexual Harassment Campaign page, which includes the information in Local Law 94. So these are the descriptions, the scenarios of instances that could happen that constitute sexual harassment in the workplace. This includes contact information for the Commission, how to file a complaint, a walkthrough of our complaint process. And I know that in fiscal year 2024, just so far, it's already been accessed nearly 200,000 times. So we also know that people are still going to that page. I will also mention that we have a page dedicated to our sexual harassment training, which so far in fiscal 2024, fiscal year 2024, has been already accessed over a million times. And that's that free downloadable training we mentioned for employers that they're required to provide in their workplace and keep track of employees having taken the training. And I also just want to add to our discussion of case numbers, all claims that are filed are thoroughly investigated.
Okay, but we don't know what was adjudicated, rejected, we don't have those numbers.
Well, as far, can you explain what you mean by rejected?
Well, what's the outcome of the cases? You have 135.
Oh, so, 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 again, I'm not sure what you mean by, like, at that point, the cases are generally, the bulk of them are either gonna go to, to settlement, so have resolution by settlement, or if the Commission isn't able to settle them, would proceed to, would proceed to trial, but the vast majority are resolved by settlement.
Okay, but we don't know how many of them have settlements.
Yeah, and I'm happy to follow up with you after the.
That was my point, like, we don't have any information. Can DCAST provide an overview about what information is captured through the climate surveys developed pursuant to Local Law 101 of 2018?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, the climate survey that we produce pursuant to Local Law 101 is designed to gauge employees' awareness about their rights and responsibilities under the EEO policy and what resources are available. Particularly, we seek to gauge their awareness of how to file a complaint, where to go to file a complaint, whether they've experienced or witnessed any kind of discrimination or harassment, what kinds of resources they would like in order to learn more about the process, whether they find that it is transparent, whether they know who their EEO officer is, et cetera.
And what's the rate of completion of the surveys?
So, the survey is a voluntary tool. We have, of course, disseminated widely through all of the agencies, and I would have to, Councilmember, I will have to give you an exact number and follow-up, but I believe the completion rate for the very last survey approximated about 30,000, again, recognizing that it is a voluntary survey that is anonymous, but the information we obtain from, from there is extremely helpful. I also want to point out that, give me a moment, I can find information about that. So, I do want to make you aware that the results have indicated, since the last survey, the, they're consistent from the 2018 survey and 2020 survey, that the overwhelming majority of the workforce indicated that they are aware of the EEO policy and were trained within the last two years on EEO awareness and diversity and inclusion. Familiarity with the policy improved nearly 4% from 92.4% in 2018 to 96.1% in 2020. Knowledge of where and how to file an EEO complaint decreased slightly, and that was from 84% in 2018 to 81%, and we attribute that slight decrease to the temporary remote working conditions that were implemented during the COVID-19 pandemic. Because of a change in workplace settings temporarily reduced the visibility of EEO offices. In comparison to the 2018 survey results, the employees' knowledge of what happens to an EEO complaint after it has been filed increased by nearly 8%. That's, it went up from 57.4% to 65.8% in 2020. And the majority of the respondents continue to indicate that their workplace is safe from EEO violations. That was an increase from 61.5% to 65.9% in 2020. So, most employees continue to indicate that they have not personally experienced discrimination. And this increased awareness really reflects that the climate survey is bolstered by the effect of the sexual harassment training completions across the city, which is well over 90% in our most recent cycle.
Thank you, I'm gonna hand it over to co-chair Russell.
Thank you so much, Chair Lewis, really appreciate your leadership and thoughtful questions. I'd like to focus my questions at this time for the Law Department, so, Mr. Eichenholz, thank you for being here today. Just maybe start at a high level. Could you explain the process by which the Law Department determines whether or not to represent an employee accused of sexual harassment?
Yes, Councilmember, I'd be happy to. So, a representation process, when we receive a complaint in which, obviously, in many of these cases, the city may be named as a defendant or individuals, when there's an individual, the individual has a right, in most cases, to request representation of the Law Department. So, we will receive that request, usually it's transmitted via an agency or from an employee. After we get that request, we will gather information. So, what we will do is, we will speak with the agency, we will determine whether there is any information or investigation related to the allegations of the sexual harassment claim. Most frequently, this will come up in the form of an EEO investigation if someone had filed an internal complaint of sexual harassment. That's, I think, the most common example in the sexual harassment context. We'll review that information, and we will generally, and I'm speaking now focusing really on individuals who are being named because they're alleged to have engaged in harassment, sometimes we'll have supervisors by, you know, people who are less, or a little more tangential, I'll focus on people who are alleged to have harassed. We will gather up information, and then, if based on, you know, we'll review that information, and then we will bring in the individual to interview them. And this process is based, and then when we've gathered up all this information, we'll make a determination about whether representation is appropriate. The most common statute here, which is General Municipal Law 50K, says the Law Department shall, it's mandatory language, represent unless there's a determination made that the individual is violating rules and regulations or the matter was outside the scope of employment. The other thing I would add is just that, over the last few years, we have both standardized and enhanced our internal support for these investigations and determinations. The current Corporation Council, with the support of the mayor and the administration, created an Ethics and Compliance Division, and amongst the roles of that division is to provide advice to, and to help organize representation investigations, particularly if there's a potential conflict issue, an ethical issue, and issues to whether or not the city's position may diverge from an individual's position. So that, when we have indication that there may be a concern with representation, we can now rely on this division and its staff, both to conduct the representation, to do the review, and to make sure we're making a recommendation that comports with the law for the Corporation Council to act on.
So, the final decision is by the Corporation Council?
That's right.
Could you confirm on the record who is the Corporation Council today?
Corporation Council today is the Honorable Sylvia O. Heinz Radix.
Okay, glad to hear that. Does the number of employees providing on-the-record statements about the inappropriate actions of an employee influence the Law Department's decision?
I'm not quite sure what you mean by on-the.
Does the number of employees providing on-the-record statements via the EEO complaint or otherwise, the EEO investigation or otherwise, indicating sexual harassment took place about the inappropriate actions of the harasser, does that influence the Law Department's decision to represent them?
That would be a case-by-case determination. Obviously, the number is, I think, generally less important than the substance, the credibility and, and what, and, and how it would be viewed in, in connection with all the other information that we have. It's a holistic determination, so that, there's no, like, that wouldn't, it wouldn't be if there's.
So, if 10 people are saying that they saw somebody commit egregious sexual harassment, it's more about the substance and specifics than it is the number of people?
Correct, so if there's one person with a very, you know, with a backed-up, you know, statement, that may be a different situation. It's, it's about the substance of the statement, how it fits into the universe of information.
But if you have a large number of people with corroborating, you know, who are corroborating the same story of sexual harassment, that must inform your decision that, that the person's actions are violating rules and regulations.
Like I said, obviously, we look at it in view of everything else.
Does influence from City Hall have an impact on these decisions?
I, I, I hesitate because I don't think influence is the right word. So, when we do representation determinations, we speak, you know, there's an agency that's involved, right? So, we will speak with the agency, we will understand the agency's position on what happened. So, there may be cases that involve or implicate City Hall, we absolutely would speak with City Hall and understand their view on the events and what happened while making a representation determination. I say influence because, at all times, the representation determination remains the Corporation Council's to make, so while that might come into consideration, it obviously would not be dispositive.
Right, but the distinction from when John Doe, junior-level staffer at the Department of Transportation, is involved in an issue versus when the mayor himself or a senior, very influential staffer at City Hall is involved in an issue, is that the mayor is responsible for the appointment of the Corporation Council and oversees the Law Department? Right?
That's correct, the mayor, the mayor does with, obviously, appoints.
So, when City Hall weighs in on a decision to provide influence on whether the, the Corporation Council should be providing taxpayer-funded legal representation to somebody who's accused of significant sexual harassment, there's a potential conflict of interest?
I, I'm not sure, I, I, I don't, I don't think you can get from point A to point B there, especially in a case that factually implicates the mayor as a supervisor or City, you know, or City Hall's a supervisor. I think that, again, it's very context and case-specific.
Can you confirm if City Hall weighed in, one way or the other, voiced a preference on the Law Department's representation of Tim Pearson?
No, because, as you know, I cannot comment or share information covered by the Attorney Client Privilege Attorney Work product, so I can't talk about a specific case like.
Or maybe phrased a different way, has City Hall weighed in on any recent decisions about whether counsel should be provided to an alleged harasser?
It's, it's the same answer, Councilmember.
I, I guess I, I struggle when you say on the record that, you know, the Law Department only provides legal representation to city employees when you believe the employee is, quote, "not in violation of any rule or regulation of his agency at the time the alleged act or omission occurred." Tim Pearson has been widely reported to have harassed a subordinate on over 20 occasions. The survivor's boss witnessed Pearson's harassment and directed other employees in the office to make sure Pearson was never alone with female staffers. When employees tried to transfer out of the office, Pearson destroyed their careers. How could the Law Department possibly make the determination that defending his egregious conduct is consistent with such a policy that he did not violate rules and regulations? What do, well, I'll just leave it, is there anything that you can shed on this?
Again, I can't talk about specific cases, I can say that, as I've mentioned, I think, when the Law Department makes representation determinations, it often has access to different information that's not necessarily in the public domain, and generally speaking, what the Law Department is determining, again, the statute and the way representation is, city employees are entitled to representation unless a determination, an affirmative determination is made, that they were not in the scope of their employment or they're in violation of rules and regulations.
It's impossible to read the widely-reported conducts of harassment by Mr. Pearson and not determine that he was in clear conduct of the rules and regulations, that he reportedly sexually harassed one subordinate on dozens of occasions. It seems obvious that his influence, his, his, his status as one of the most powerful people in city government informed the determination to secure taxpayer-funded representation. It seems clear that it's only because he's a buddy of the mayor that he was able to secure Law Department taxpayer-funded representation. Is it true that Judge Heinz Radix pushed back against this egregious decision, as has been publicly reported?
I obviously cannot comment on any conversations that Judge Heinz Radix had with, with her clients, including the mayor, including potentially Pearson, that that's not appropriate for me to do.
Outside of the scope of the investigation that's, or the litigation that's happening now, what is Mr. Pearson's job status?
As far as I'm aware, he's still on duty in his current role, working for the mayor.
So, he's still running the mayor's Office of Municipal Services assessment?
That's my understanding.
He's accused of sexual harassment and retaliation by a retired female sergeant, as we've reported. Is he still managing the unit and supervising staff?
Again, I'm not involved in his work duties, so I cannot give you an accurate answer.
But as far as you're aware, there's no change in his work status at this time? He is continuing to supervise employees, presumably female staffers, today despite his conduct of chronic harassment of people under his supervision.
I, I have no specific information, Councilmember, that I could give you about whether or not that's the case, about whether there were any changes.
And can you confirm, is his conduct currently being investigated by City Hall? Or is that investigation concluded?
Well, any investigation, EEO, would be confidential. I will say generally, I'll talk a little generally about policy, that generally, when sexual harassment cases are going through the litigation process, you know, where both sides have the opportunity, we generally will address the various allegations in court, but as we go through discovery process, we learn things, we, meaning the city and the Law Department, and we will continue assessing and seeing what that information has, and we are in constant communication in these cases with client agencies, and if information, both positive or negative, that might change someone's thought process about whether disciplinary determinations should be made, come up in litigation, we endeavor to communicate them as promptly as possible.
I'd like to, to focus a couple of questions on the EEO investigation that took place relating to Mr. Pearson's harassment. In response to allegations about Tim Pearson, City Hall said, quote, "The individual chose not to cooperate in any investigation, and thus, none of her claims could be substantiated." But the survivor reportedly spoke to, excuse me, the mayor's office of equal employment opportunity three different times, and was interviewed by NYPD Internal Affairs about her allegations for two hours. The city was made aware of incidents on at least three occasions. Her supervisor witnessed the harassment and attempted to stand up for her. He then got into a heated argument with Deputy Mayor, her supervisor got into a heated argument with Deputy Mayor Phil Banks and NYPD Chief of Operations Jeff Madry about Pearson's egregious behavior. Her colleagues quit the office in protest. The NYPD Internal Affairs Bureau conducted interviews with multiple people in the office. How is it possible that claims couldn't be substantiated? Can you explain what actions the mayor's office of equal employment opportunity took in this case? Has the Law Department conducted a review of whether the mayor's office mishandled the investigation?
Again, Councilmember, I cannot discuss material that'd be privileged or covered by the Law Department's Attorney Work product, given the pending litigation.
Okay, so, maybe I'll try it from a different angle. Are there other ways to substantiate a complaint when a survivor is afraid of retaliation?
Absolutely, and, and in, in many cases, you know, I, I think there's, in, within my experience handling sexual harassment cases as a litigator, working with DCAST and their staff on internal investigations, there are many times, many times where a survivor will be fearful of coming forward, will be fearful of retaliation. One of the things that we do, both in the litigation context, like I said, that's why we, we, we continue to assess what, what information we receive in discovery if there's a lawsuit, and the EEO policy provides generally that if someone were to go to, confide in a supervisor or someone with a duty to report and say, but please don't tell anyone, they will still go to the EEO office, and the EEO office will attempt as best they can to investigate and determine, respectful of the fact the survivor simply may not be comfortable coming forward. So, so generally, we make every effort in the city government, when, when we learn information collaterally or perhaps from an individual who may not be comfortable or ready to come forward or go through the process, to determine as much as we can, given that, and, you know, and obviously, we would never force someone who's not comfortable or willing to speak with us, to speak with us, but, but we do make every attempt to, to.
But if the survivor is concerned about retaliation and doesn't want to, if the survivor is concerned about retaliation, and, and, quote, "The spokesperson for the mayor said, 'The individual chose not to cooperate in any investigation, and thus, none of her claims could be substantiated.'" That's what the mayor's spokesperson said about this case. So, I'm just, we're on the record about things that the mayor's team has decided to put out there, for whatever reason. That's different than what you just said, right? If, if I understood what you said, if the person is concerned about retaliation, didn't want to cooperate with the investigation as a result because Mr. Pearson had seen, had, had forced multiple people to see their job status in the NYPD demoted because of his retaliatory tactics. tactics and his power and influence within that agency, the person was unwilling to cooperate with the investigation, understandably. But then, why didn't the EEO office engage with other people, get information from witnesses, gather a comprehensive story of what occurred here, when there are clearly so many other people who knew what was going on and how problematic his deeply, deeply egregious behavior was?
Again, counsel member, I cannot discuss the facts of a specific case that is in litigation that we are investigating.
I totally appreciate that, Mr. Eagan-Holtz, but it seems apparent that what you're saying should have happened, that there should have been a thoughtful investigation where witnesses were engaged and other people who were aware of the misconduct were contacted, did not happen because the mayor's spokesperson said on the record, "We put this to bed because the person was afraid of being retaliated against, so we didn't pursue the investigation and looked after our buddy, Tim Pearson." I'd like to recognize my colleagues from the Government Ops Committee, Councilmembers Palladino and Vernikov, thank you for being with us. I'll just ask one more and then pass it back to Councilman, to Chair Lewis. You know what? Actually, let me just pass it back to Chair Lewis. You take it from here. I'll take a break.
You gather your thoughts. I know you can't speak too much or comment too much on facts on Pearson, but we will get back to the STOP Act. All right. How has the Law Department engaged with city entities to ensure that the STOP Act is followed?
So the Law Department, we, our role with regard to the STOP Act is that we provide legal advice and support to the agencies charged with implementing it. And I believe our Legal Counsel Division regularly provides that legal advice, counsel, whatever support that they need to make sure that it's being implemented properly and lawfully.
And how many cases did the Law Department pursue prior to the passage of the STOP Act?
When you say cases the Law Department pursued, what specifically, what sort of cases?
Cases that was sent to your attention regarding sexual assault?
So we're not a prosecuting agency, except in the juvenile justice context. So we would, that's why I'm a little confused by the question. Generally, if a case involves sexual assault, it's handled by a prosecuting attorney, not the Law Department.
The cases that did come to your attention as you represent the employees, how many of those were pursued by your department?
So you're saying cases that were.
Let me go to the next question.
Okay.
I know the first barrage of questions were a lot for you. In general, what obstacles did the law face when investigating and pursuing these cases?
So again, we are not charged, and you're saying these cases, we're not charged, as I understand, with investigating and pursuing cases under the STOP Act? That is, the other agencies that are here?
If they would like to jump in.
Yeah.
Could you repeat the question, please?
I'll ask you another question. How have the number of reports of sexual harassment changed since the STOP Act?
Thank you for your question. As I mentioned previously, after the STOP Act, there was a surge in both inquiries of people contacting the commission regarding sexual harassment and then filed claims from the, claims that the commission filed following investigation. So the STOP Act led to, or rather, following the STOP Act, we saw that increase in people coming to us. And again, a large part of the STOP Act, a large part of our agency's mandate, is educating the public. We do this through our campaigns. We do business corridor walks, we create fact sheets and provide information, we offer a variety of free trainings on our website. So coupled with that, that part of our education piece, we saw that increase after the STOP Act.
Thanks. This is for the next agency. What initiatives or programs does END GBV currently have in place to address the issue of street harassment?
Sure. Thanks for the question. So in street harassment, let me just find my page. We are the co-chair of, along with the Commission on Gender Equity, of the Street Harassment Prevention Advisory Board. And we have been running that under city, like, local law of 46, right, for about a year. And so we work closely with our board members and other city agencies to really understand the issue of street harassment and develop responses to what New Yorkers are experiencing.
And what are the initiatives and programs you have to address?
So currently, you know, the board has really been focused on launching a survey. That was the first goal, was to launch a survey to really understand what New Yorkers are experiencing around street harassment. So that's what we did last fall, and we had, you know, quite an overwhelming response to that survey. And so we are now kind of evaluating those results, and based on that, we're going to work with our board members to really develop recommendations.
So you don't have the data or any results or outcomes?
We can share some preliminary results.
That would be great.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you.
So some highlights from the survey say that 72% of survey respondents, and we had, you know, about 3,700 responses overall, so it was, like I said, it was, we got a large volume of responses. About 72% of survey respondents experienced street harassment in New York City at some point in their lifetime. And these are, again, preliminary, so they, you know, we'll dig deeper. Most respondents, actually about 57%, first experienced street harassment when they were minors. And people reported experiencing street harassment based on their sex, 62%, physical appearance, 53%, race, 47%, age, 33%, and gender identity or expression was 24%. And I will say, I think, you know, we have worked with our board, before I forget, to develop a Street Harassment Prevention Resource Guide. That's another big piece of what we worked on in, like, the first year of meeting. And so that guide really, it includes resources for folks that have experienced street harassment and also includes suggestions for individuals on how to keep themselves safe, because I think.
What did some of those recommendations look like?
Sure. So I think, you know, in the moment, some of the things that we recommend to folks are, you know, moving somewhere safe, right? Visibly setting a boundary of some kind, asking bystanders for help, recording the interaction, requesting emergency assistance, and what we call the five Ds, which is distract, delegate, document, delay, direct. But we also really want to make sure that folks know that all of these really need to be evaluated with the regard for your own safety, right? And especially if you're in immediate danger, we do recommend that you call 911 to get immediate assistance if something is happening or if you're being harassed in a way that makes you feel unsafe. And then the other thing I'll sort of say that I think the board is really, really, you know, thinking about and wants to make sure we keep as part of the conversation is that, you know, while we can give folks tips on how to access resources and keep themselves safe, that's really, we want to make sure we're putting the onus on the people that are doing the harassing. And so we are considering, you know, recommendations on what that might look like in terms of really doing more prevention work, because that's really what we need to do, right? We need to shift that conversation of what is okay and what's not okay to do, and really have people recognize that it's gender-based harassment, that there's no excuse for it, and it's not okay to do in public, and it's not okay to do with people you don't know.
If you could share with us, what do you think is the most major obstacles in addressing street harassment from an advisory board perspective? And let me tell you why I asked you that question. I see Councilwoman Vernikov with us. I think it was a constituent in her district, she texted the Women's Caucus to ask, "Hey, what kind of support could we get?" And I know the board has limitations. So what are those obstacles that you all have that you would need further support for?
Yeah. I mean, I think broadly, the biggest obstacle in a lot of this, right, is that we're really talking about changing cultural norms here, and that's a very, very broad-based change. And I think that that's a big change that we're trying to make, right? And I think our board members are great and very committed and represent different city agencies and represent different boroughs, and are people with lived experience themselves. So I think we'd always invite more participation from other folks that are interested in joining the work. I think the work gets stronger the more voices we have. And so we'd love to sort of, you know, share with anybody, sort of, any upcoming meetings that we have that might be open to the public, any focus groups, we'd love to talk to anybody about, sort of, their ideas and engage them in this work.
And what kind of support or efforts is your board organizing to help women that have recently been attacked on the street?
So that hasn't necessarily come up in the board meetings right now, but I think in general, obviously, the Adams administration is committed to public safety and wants to make sure that people are safe when they're walking around. I think, you know, and GBV, I think, and you mentioned this in your comments too, right, a lot of these things aren't reported. And so I do think we encourage folks to report these incidents as they're happening and call 911 and make sure they're accessing resources and support. We also want folks to know that they can always call the hotline, the 1-800-621-HOPE number, 1-800-621-4673, to access supports in the moment, including just sort of immediate crisis counseling, de-escalation, safety planning. Like, they can get that in the moment from the hotline if they're not calling 911. So I think we just want to make sure that folks know that those resources are out there, so we can actually connect with the folks that are experiencing this.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions? Any questions? No? No? All right. Chair Wessler?
Always happy to keep going. And we've been joined by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez. Warm entrance. Okay. These are questions that I think kind of apply to Law, DCAST, so I'll defer to you guys on who wants to grab the baton. What is the Mayor's Office of Equal Employment Opportu, when was the Office of, when was the Mayor's Office of Equal Employment Opportunity created and why?
Thank you, Chair Wessler. So I think you're referring to my office, which is actually.
No, 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 the office in the Mayor's Office. The Mayor's Office of Equal Employment Opportunity was created at the beginning of this administration?
Oh, pardon me, I'm sorry, but I'm not sure which one you're talking about, because there may be the office that's run by Commissioner Sherman.
No, it's run by Ms. Melody Ruiz. She makes $201,071.
Oh, pardon.
She's the chief EEO officer of the Mayor's Office.
Okay.
Longtime former Borough Hall staffer.
So Chair Wessler, we know that to be the EEO office for the Mayor's Office entities is how we at DCAST see it. So we just see it as another agency that has an EEO office that handles matters that pertain to Mayor's Office entities and the staff there.
Do you think it's appropriate for a longtime employee of the mayor, dating back to his Borough Hall days, who worked for him for many years and got a large pay raise and promotion when he became mayor, to be charged with investigating complaints against his closest allies?
Chair Wessler, I really can't comment on that because I don't have knowledge about that.
Are there standards to ensure that EEO officers are impartial?
So.
And what oversight does DCAST provide to ensure that they're a well-functioning office?
Of course, yes. Well, yes, generally speaking, again, we, as I mentioned, provide resources to agencies and instruction on applying the EEO policy. So that includes the processes of investigations, and we provide training on that, developments in the industry about that, proper ways to conduct investigations. We have a training portfolio for our EEO professionals. All the agency EEO officers are told to take those trainings in order to be able to conduct investigations.
How would you determine if there's a potential conflict of interest in the EEO office if the person in charge of the office is more concerned about the mayor's protection than the protection of employees against harassment?
So Chair Wessler, I can only speak very generally about the fact that EEO officers report to the agency head and have an obligation to address all the complaints and needs raised by the workforce in that agency or entity. They obviously must execute their duties objectively.
Right. After the kind of widely-reported egregious misconduct of Tim Pearson and the mishandling of the investigation by City Hall, does that lead DCAST to conduct any further oversight to try to fix the EEO operation at City Hall?
No, Chair Wessler. Again, we provide guidance in general about how to apply the EEO policy, but we have no ability to intervene in those matters. Our jurisdiction is very limited to investigations that pertain to complaints raised against an agency head or an EEO officer when they have committed alleged behavior that could have violated the EEO policy.
Whose responsibility is it to fix it if we have an EEO operation that's not working independently and effectively as it should be?
So again, we take multi-pronged approaches in educating agencies and agency heads about their obligations under the city charter, under the EEO policy, to carry out an effective EEO program. That entails, from the top all the way to the bottom, is an agency head endorsing the operation of the EEO office as an independent, objective resource for employees. EEO officers are instructed, are guided by DCAST to provide resources and transparency about the complaint process, the fact that they are the resource for employees to report their concerns or complaints. They are supposed to also inform employees that they can also file claims externally at venues such as the City Commission on Human Rights. So those are sort of the structure and the tools that we provide to agencies so that the workforce is empowered and aware of their rights and where to go to make complaints. The first point of contact is always within the agency and to actually avail themselves of the opportunity to have their concerns investigated through the EEO process.
It's, I think we've seen improvement in recent years, dating back to the Blasio administration, of the team at DCAST doing more to provide technical assistance and support to EEO operations at agencies around the city. And I appreciate that effort. I know it's not easy. I know that you don't have direct oversight of those EEO offices, but rather provide guidance, support, technical assistance, to try to help them do their jobs, and that you encourage city workers to know their rights and come forward and file complaints. But at the end of the day, when we have an ineffective EEO operation here in the Mayor's Office at City Hall, there's no ultimate accountability. And that's why I think it's so important that we consider the creation of an outside independent entity that can conduct these investigations and complaints that are not influenced by the politics of protecting the mayor, but are rather committed to protecting the individuals who are subject to harassment. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, the Sexual Harassment Working Group, a group of former staffers, many from North Brooklyn, who worked in the New York State Legislature, who experienced, witnessed, and reported harassment, conducted a really exceptional, thorough, and comprehensive review of state policies and issued recommendations back in 2018. One of their recommendations was a truly independent entity to conduct investigations of harassment that's not, that is independent of elected officials and our appointees. Would you be open or supportive to that kind of model here in city government?
So Chair Wessler, our jurisdiction, as I explained, is limited to when EEO officers and agency heads are specifically accused or alleged to have violated the EEO policy. Any other type of misconduct, their behavior has to be investigated by the discipline entities that address misconduct of any kind of employee within that agency.
No, I get that. I'm asking about, should there be a different approach? Because I'm concerned that we're not as effective as we should be, that the situation that we've all read about in the newspaper, day after day, involving Tim Pearson, should embarrass us all, that this is happening on, right now, across the building, right here at City Hall. Do we need some sort of independent entity that could, that is independent from politics that's responsible for this? I'd love to get CCHR and Law to weigh in. Could you provide any perspective on that recommendation?
Counsel member, I would just, I would add that we do have, and I want to honor them because I know they do this sort of work, in the city, we do have the Equal Employment Practices Commission. Their function, in part, is to audit the EEO offices, to make sure that our citywide EEO policy is being complied with. And so I just wanted to mention that with respect to when you talk about, the commission, I believe, is appointed in a certain way, it's, you know, it's not.
Joint mayor, speaker, appointee, if I recall correctly, in charge. We will, we should follow up with that entity to determine if a review needs to be conducted for how the Pearson case has been so badly mishandled. But does CCHR want to weigh in on this as well?
The commission is committed to combating sexual harassment in all workplaces in New York City, whether they be private businesses or government offices. The law, the law's protections apply regardless of whether they're public or private workplaces. And, you know, we encourage anyone who believes they've experienced discrimination to come to the commission.
The federal EOC found that 75% of employees who spoke out against workplace mistreatment face some sort of retaliation. So overwhelmingly, when this, when people speak out against harassment and mistreatment in the workplace, they face retaliation. It's clear that happened here at City Hall. It's been widely reported, without any accountability whatsoever. How does the city ensure retaliation does not occur?
So again, as part of the process where employees are encouraged and informed and made aware of how to report an EO complaint when they approach the EO Office, the EO Office has to make them aware of what the process entails, which is to take all the information from the complainant, also interview any witnesses that may have further information. If that complainant is wary of being known or they need to stay anonymous, it is explained to them that, to the extent possible, that confidentiality will be maintained, and that they are protected against retaliation, and that they should come forward and feel comfortable in reporting any kind of behavior that they think dissuades them from participating in that EO investigative process. And that if they have allegations of retaliation, those will be investigated as a separate complaint, independent and apart from the underlying allegations. In addition, they should be offered interim protective measures while the investigation is occurring. For example, if they work in close proximity to the alleged harasser, their schedules can be adjusted, work locations can be changed and modified. There is a host of creative approaches that can be taken to protect a complainant that may be concerned about their safety or fear retaliation. Every case is unique, based on the facts, in a case-by-case assessment, but those are some of the key principles that EO officers are trained to take into consideration.
Is it a violation of confidentiality to publicly say that an employee did not cooperate with an EO investigation? Eric, could you, Mr. Heikenholtz, would you mind?
I think that's dependent on the circumstances. And I don't, quite frankly, know enough about, I know what's been reported, obviously. I don't know enough about the underlying facts of of how that disclosure got into the press to be able to weigh in on that.
Well, we know how it got into the press because the mayor's spokesperson said the individual chose not to cooperate in any investigation, and thus, none of her claims could be substantiated. Is that not a violation of confidentiality to publicly say that this employee chose not to cooperate with the EO investigation?
A disposition in an EO case, again, I'm talking generally, we will often have to close cases if someone is not being cooperative and they can't, that, as a result of that, they cannot pursue the investigation. The reason a disposition is highlighted in that way is so that we understand that that case closure is not a decision on the merits and, you know. So I, I think that the nature of the disposition of complaining uncooperative in and of itself would not necessarily be a violation. That's why I say I need to understand the circumstances a little better.
But it very well may be a violation, is what I think I've heard you say.
Right. Well, there's a difference between conveying what someone said and conveying the disposition of of an EO investigation.
Okay.
A closed investigation.
So, so is the recommenda-- am I hearing correctly that if indeed, we'll speak in hypotheticals here, okay? If indeed, the Mayor's EO Officer mishandled a complaint of serial sexual harassment in the office, that the appropriate place to file a complaint for oversight is to go to the EEPC for them to conduct a review of how this investigation was handled?
So generally, the way the policy and process works is if someone's dissatisfied with how a complaint's being handled internally or the EO Office is not being responsive, they can go to the City Commission on Human Rights, State Division of Human Rights, United States Equal Employment Opportunity, the external agencies that would conduct a similar sort of investigation, is is generally the process. So the EEPC, they are more, that people will go from time to time with individual complaints. Generally, they'll refer it to DCAST or law or the agencies, as, as, as the case may be. But generally, the EEPC is doing auditing with compliance, making sure the EO Office is functioning properly and in a, on a macro level, not on an individual case.
Right. They're determining if the office is functioning properly. But unfortunately, CCHR, where the chair is appointed by the mayor, the EEPC, where the mayor is one of two appointees for the role, they're all still subject to the influence of the mayor. So is there a mechanism where we can have a truly independent review of the, you know, bungling of this investigation of serial harassment by Tim Pearson in the Mayor's Office? Is there any place for a proper independent investigation to occur?
Again, not, not talking about any specific case, talking generally, the United States EOC and the New York State Division of Human Rights are not appointed to or accountable to any elected political official in the city.
I'd like to just ask briefly about Mayor Adams' case of alleged sexual harassment, and then one other topic. Does an incident that occurred 30 years ago, so hypotheticals, hypotheticals, does an incident that occurred 30 years ago at a different agency from where the employee currently works that occurred outside the office after work hours fall within the scope of employment and discharge of duties? How so?
Again, I'm not going to answer a hypothetical that basically implies an actual case that's in active litigation. I will say, as a general matter, due to the Adult Survivors Act, there are cases, and we've received, I believe, proxy over 700 of them now, that can date back decades, including--
You've received 700 cases from the Adult Survivors Act that could date back decades. Do you have any sense of, out of that 700, approximately how many the Law Department or taxpayer-funded outside counsel is representing those alleged harasser former employees?
That I know for certain right now, that we have one case where there is outside counsel. And we have, and we continue to explore the potential of retaining outside counsel in other cases.
Sorry, I think I, Mr. Heikenholtz, I apologize if I didn't ask that question clearly. I think you just said there were about 700 cases, to your knowledge--
Yes.
--of incidents that occurred through the Adult Survivors Act, of incidents of harassment from decades ago. The, do you know of those 700 cases, the alleged harassment happened by city employees, right? Of those 700, how many of them are, is the City of New York, the Law Department, or outside counsel representing those 700 alleged harassers?
The, the alleged harassers? I don't know the exact number, but we are representing employees named in ASA cases, in multiple ASA cases.
Would it be possi-- is it a, I don't want to kill you in paperwork, but it'd be helpful to have some context here. Do you have any sense of the scale, or is it possible to conduct a review of how many of these cases that either the Law Department or outside counsel are representing the alleged harassers?
Sure. I mean, we could, we could take a look at that. I'm not sure how, how intensive it would be. It may be that there's only a small number of cases that name individuals, some seeking just liability against the city. But we can take a look, and I don't know how, how fact-intensive it would be. I do know, like I said, the one thing I can tell you here without giving you specific numbers is it's multiple cases.
Okay. I mean, multiple out of 700 could mean a lot of different things, so it doesn't tell me very much, but I appreciate your willingness to look into it and get back to us. Does the Law Department represent city employees who are survivors of sexual harassment?
Yes. It, it, I mean, contextually, obviously, our role, by and large, in sexual harassment matters, for the most part, we do do some affirmative work with the City Commission on Human Rights. But by and large, our role in sexual harassment matters, well, two roles. One is obviously to give advice and counsel, to make sure that we are being compliant with the law. The other role is defense of litigation, where we are defending the City of New York when it is being sued. So in that context, we are generally representing the city and potentially employees accused of sexual harassment. But there are many contexts in which people who have alleged sexual harassment, survivors of sexual harassment, are being sued. And obviously, the, the Law Department would represent those employees like they would anyone else.
How does an employee access that defense, or that representation from the Law Department if they've been, if they have experienced sexual harassment?
So, so again, it's, it's, and that's what I'm saying, it's not, we generally wouldn't, it would be the same way if they were being sued for some reason, and it arose in their city employment. They would come, they would make the recommend, they would, they would make their request, we would do the review, and if it was appropriate, we'd represent them.
So, just a broad question. As noted, if you believe an employee is in violation of a rule or regulation of their agency at the time the alleged act or omission occurred, then you would not represent them, right? If that's the, the, the language from 50K, right?
Yes. It's, it's basically the exception to the rule, and if we determine that that exception applies, then yes, we decline. And, and I would mention, Councilmember, at any point, a litigation that becomes the case, we would do so.
So--
Had to do it, unfortunately.
The flip side of that is, in these, in highly-public political cases, does the Law Department worry that there's a presumption of guilt by choosing not to represent the alleged harasser?
The statute really is essentially a right. Like I said, the language is "shall," conveyed on employee unless the Corporation Counsel can affirmatively and specifically and rationally and factually make certain determinations. By and large, the case, you know, there are cases that are, they're sort of, we look at it one way, there are cases where the information that we have may, the information we have may point to the fact the employee did nothing wrong. The information we have may point to the fact that the employee did something wrong. And there may be cases where there's some in-between, right? And, and so what we're doing is we're making the determination, again, we're making the determination just, we're trying to understand whether or not the employee is entitled to representation. The default rule is that the employee is entitled to representation. The wording of the statute is "shall." So unless we have, we can make, at that early stage, with the information we have, a specific determination that the employee has, in fact, violated a rule or regulation, we, we would undertake the, the representation of the employee, generally speaking. I mean, again--
Regardless of the perception of a presumption of guilt on how that case could be perceived in a highly--
No, the statute, yeah, the statute wouldn't allow us on, to, to put a presumption of guilt. And based on the case laws, I understand that we would not be able, that would need some sort of change in the law to be able to have a presumption of guilt in a sexual harassment case.
Okay. I, it's very challenging for me to understand how the Corporation Counsel, appointed by the mayor, is responsible for making these final decisions, would not consider, couldn't, would not be influenced by how the perception of guilt would be associated with a decision not to represent the mayor, Tim Pearson, when the statute states very clearly that the only reason, that the primary reason they wouldn't be represented is because they violated a rule or regulation. The Law Department is essentially saying, we reviewed the facts, we reviewed the case, this person messed up, we're not going to represent them because they clearly messed up, but somehow I'm going to tell my boss that I'm not representing him in that case, or I'm going to tell my boss's bestie that I'm not representing him in that case. That doesn't make sense, right? Like, there's no possible way that that determination could be made in an apolitical, by-the-book manner. It's impossible. So that's, again, why I think there's a clear need for an outside entity to be making these decisions, because this is far too political a process. And we've seen how, this is a perfect textbook example of how it's wildly run amok. I just want to go to DCAST for a moment, and I'm very concerned about the decline in complaints. There were just 247 complaints of sexual harassment for fiscal year '23, slight decrease from 2022, significantly below pre-COVID levels. Are you concerned, and really frankly, comparable to the height of COVID, are you concerned that complaints for FY '23 are equivalent to the numbers we saw at the height of COVID when so many city workers were remote? What do you attribute this decline to? And I know you're going to say that there was more training and that we're doing a great job, but do you think sexual harassment has actually decreased, or do you think employees are just no longer reporting? The Me Too movement in 2018, 2019 brought a ton of attention to these issues and encouraged folks to come forward. Do you think that the climate has shifted and that is the real reason that we've seen such a steep and stark decline in the number of sexual harassment complaints in New York City?
Yes. Well, thank you, Chair Ressler. I appreciate that important question. I do firmly believe that with the awareness that has been raised within the city that I've explained, our training efforts, our outreach efforts, including the awareness efforts that there are in our external, social climate, the Me Too movement, et cetera, people are more informed and more empowered to know about reporting and feeling that they are supported in reporting instances of sexual harassment behavior. So I do believe that when the numbers are declining, it is still due to awareness, as well as the deterrent effect that training has on potential offenders, because they are also made aware of what the consequences can be, whether it's disciplinary action, whether it's personal liability, et cetera. And so all of those factors contribute to the fact that there is a credible and overall downward trend in our cases. We go as far back as since 2019, we saw a notable decrease from 46%, a 46% decrease. And we understand that part of that is attributable to the sudden shift due to the COVID-19 pandemic into the telework environment. However, we continue to see that there is a downward trend, as we are very aggressive in educating the workforce through the agencies, through our local law 92 requirement to issue sexual harassment prevention training, another complementary training that reinforces those principles as well that I had mentioned in our testimony. So I do believe that that has an effect, a positive effect, in informing and empowering employees to speak up and to deter bad behavior.
I understand individual agencies are only required to report if there are five or more complaints at that agency. Are you able to provide the total number of complaints for all agencies that includes the agencies with less than five complaints?
So the total number of complaints that we report in the annual report pursuant to Local Law 97, in fact, includes those, those agencies that have less than five--
So the 247 is all-inclusive?
Is very, yes, it is.
So it's less than 1/10th of 1% of people in city government, I think 0.07%, 0.07% of city workers experienced a sexual harassment complaint, which was with a complaint, filed a sexual harassment complaint last, last fiscal year. Is that correct?
Well, again, yes, the 247 is the number that is all-inclusive--
Okay.
--and continues to be 10% less than the last report.
Right. Which could be interpreted a variety of ways. In FY '22, 44% of complaints were filed and resolved the same fiscal year, 122 out of the 275. In FY '23, only 27% of complaints were filed, that were filed, were resolved in the same year, 67 out of 247. Why are we resolving half as many complaints in the same year that they were filed? Isn't it critically important that there be swift investigations and quick accountability that may impact people's, like, working dynamics with supervisors or people that they're interacting with on a daily basis?
It is important to resolve cases efficiently, effectively, and thoroughly within, within an efficient timeframe. There are many variables in every case, however.
Sure.
And sometimes that is impacted by the ability of an EO Office to be able to reach witnesses, schedule witnesses, where our EO policy allows interviewees, the witnesses, parties to bring a representative that they choose. And sometimes, those representatives, usually union representatives, they don't have to be, but they may not be available. And that has a huge impact on the ability to proceed, gather information, and move to another phase of meeting other witnesses and getting more information and arriving at findings.
Can I ask on that? You know, it's been well-reported, there've been seven rounds of budget cuts and multiple distinct hiring freezes under Mayor Adams' tenure. And I've spoken with Commissioner Pinnock at length about the challenges of hiring and staffing up, not just at DCAST but across the city. Have staffing challenges impacted the ability of agency EO operations to complete these reports in a timely manner?
I can't speak for individual agencies, but we do know that this is very intensive work that requires a lot of attention to facts. You cannot just breeze through this through a case. You have to pay special attention. The person has to be well-trained. And so the more cases are filed, the more that EO Offices have to balance priorities and work with the-- with the staffing resources they have.
Totally. But half as many complaints, we saw investigations completed in FY23 than FY22. 122 were completed in FY22, only 67 were completed in FY23. That's a big decline. And so I appreciate that these cases need to be handled thoroughly and properly. I'm not trying to rush anything. But if you've got a situation with your supervisor, and you're waiting for an outcome of an investigation, it is an extremely painful process to be waiting, and waiting, and waiting, and to see such a stark decline across city agencies. I have to think that there are systemic factors that are at play. And I, you are interacting with the agency HR operations and EO offices every day, all day. They're not telling you that the staffing declines at their agencies and that the mayor's repeated hiring freezes are having an impact on their ability to do their work effectively?
Very generally speaking, I do know that some agencies need resources.
Yeah.
They need to be able to have more support. That decision to staff up and apply or allocate budget to that, of course, lies with the agency head and how they best determine to use the resources within their agency.
Well, we're doing our best to fight for restorations for each of the agencies right now in the budget process, including each of the agencies that are up here today. Law, decast, CHR, we're fighting for you all know it, despite what the mayor and OMB have put forward. Just wrapping up, do you think that leadership of agencies and the city set the tone for whether or not individuals feel comfortable reporting sexual harassment?
I do feel that, again, based on the guidance and support and the structure and the tools that we provide in this process to apply the EEO policy implemented in a standardized and consistent way, includes encouraging agencies to champion the work and the objectivity of the EEO process. And so I do believe that agencies are trying to convey that information to the workforce, and that it is having the positive effect of people coming forward so that their concerns are addressed.
Do you think the Adams administration has made clear that they do not tolerate sexual harassment, and that claims will be investigated thoroughly and fairly?
Well, I work under that administration now, and I'm still, and my office and decast, we all carry out our charge, and it continues to be the same, to ensure that agencies are able to raise the awareness within their workforce and carry out and follow through on addressing concerns and complaints of discrimination and harassment.
Are you concerned that the mayor's statements in defense of Tim Pearson have undermined or discouraged people who are survivors of sexual harassment at our city agencies today from coming forward?
Chair Wrestler, I really do not have an opinion about that.
Would CCHR like to comment on that? Are you concerned that the mayor's statements staunchly defending Tim Pearson undermine and discourage people across the city of New York from coming forward after they've been sexually harassed?
Thank you for your question, Chair Wrestler. I, CCHR, you know, in our role as the enforcement agency, we don't really have anything to weigh in on that specific fact, but we do reiterate that we encourage anyone to come to us who believes they've been discriminated against.
Thank you very much for your testimony today and for answering our questions. I really appreciate it. I will pass it back to Chair Lewis.
Thank you, Chair Wrestler. Two quick questions, and we'll go to public testimony. This is for the Law Department. I asked this question earlier, but I want to revise how I stated it. I wanted to know how many employees or individuals has the Law Department represented before the STOP Act? And how many are you representing after the STOP Act?
Representing in what context? We represent employees on, like, in sexual harassment cases, you mean?
Yes.
So you're talking defensively, like, when the city's being sued for sexual harassment? We don't have those sorts of numbers because we don't track in our system when we represent a particular individual. That's only in the case file. We'd have, and obviously, the dockets of each cases, we would enter an appearance representing the individual.
So would you be able to share that with us when you have it?
Sure.
I thought I was going crazy when I was asking the question, but I'm asking it again, but now, okay.
Now I understand the question, and we could, you know, I could see if we, if we, if we can get that information.
So it would be good if, if you can share that information with us before the STOP Act, after the STOP Act. And it would also be great if you could share the levels of positions of those employees with us as well, when you have that available. We would truly appreciate it. Chair Wrestler mentioned, asked a question, asked decast a question earlier, and what was replied back was that you all believe that there was a decline in reporting of less sexual harassment. But I wanted to know from NGBV, if you could share with us, do you feel the same? Does your agency feel the same? Do you feel that there's a decline in, in sexual harassment cases? Being that you deal with the public?
So, so our agency is obviously not involved directly in the workplace sexual harassment piece. I think what we can say is we haven't seen a decline in the numbers of clients that we see at our family-
A decline in what?
We haven't seen a decline in the number of clients that we see at our family justice-
You haven't seen it.
That are seeking services for all forms of domestic and gender-based violence, which includes sexual violence, right? And so, those numbers have stayed fairly, fairly consistent in terms of how many folks are reaching out for help and services.
Thank you. I now open the floor to public testimony. Before we begin that process, I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. Hold on. Sorry. This panel is excused. Thank you for making your time to meet with us today. Before we, I want to remind members of the public, I'll go into public testimony now. I want to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait for your name to be called. Once you have been recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic of update on sexual harassment best practice and policies in New York City. I will repeat, the hearing topic today is updates on sexual harassment best practice and policies in New York City. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be allowed. I will now call the first panel, which will be a hybrid panel, Iman Gad and on Zoom, Gabriella Mejia. Iman Gad and on Zoom, Gabriella Mejia. And we'll start with Iman, being that you're in person. You may begin.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Lewis, Wrestler, and members of the Joint Committee. My name is Iman Gad, and I am the Policy Coordinator at Girls for Gender Equity. GGE is a Brooklyn-based organization which works intergenerationally through a Black feminist lens to center the leadership of Black girls and gender expansive young people of color in reshaping culture and policy to achieve gender and racial justice. GGE has been a leader in the conversation around gender-based violence, including sexual harassment and sexual abuse, for close to two decades. We are offering testimony today because education is empowerment. That is why we're urging the members of this committee to co-sponsor and pass Resolution 94-2024. This resolution supports the Comprehensive Sex Ed Bill, or A4604, which is a state bill that would amend the education law to require comprehensive sex ed for students in grades K through 12. This would be age-appropriate, medically accurate, and inclusive of all students. For earlier grades, this curriculum would look like lessons about friendship and communication, which would provide students with the building blocks they need to tackle issues like consent and personal safety. As students develop, the curriculum would evolve with them to educate on topics such as intimate partner relationships, intimate partner violence, and sexual and reproductive health. At all ages, comprehensive sex ed would seek to dispel stigmas around sexuality and facilitate the development of skills to communicate effectively and make informed decisions. This would ultimately help to combat discrimination, bullying, and harassment. It is common knowledge that sexual harassment of minors is prevalent because of young people's lack of knowledge of what sexual harassment is and what it looks like. While we can list countless high-profile cases of sexual abuse of young people, such as those of R. Kelly and Jeffrey Epstein, many cases of sexual harassment of minors go undetected for years, and many never even come forward. Just three days ago, a group of 154 people filed lawsuits against New York City over sexual abuse they experienced under the juvenile detention system, as minors as far back as 1970. One of the survivors of this case stated, "I was naive and impressionable and was taken advantage of," a sentiment that emphasizes why sex ed is imperative in preventing sexual harassment for young folks. In response to the case, council member Stevens said that the system needs safeguards that could prevent a culture of secrecy, to which we remind her and the rest of city council that eradicating the overall silence around sexual harassment means tackling the culture of taboo around sex ed. Comprehensive sex ed is policy that accounts for young people in the fight against sexual harassment. This is especially crucial for young people on the margins, such as Black girls and trans or gender nonconforming folks who are not usually empowered to speak on their experiences. Again, given the insurmountable evidence of the benefits of teaching comprehensive sex ed in schools, we call on members of today's committee to co-sponsor and urge their colleagues to also sign on to Resolution 94-2024 in support of the Comprehensive Sex Ed Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Gabriella Mejia. Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Gabriella Mejia. I'm the Movement Building and Communications Manager at Right2Be. Emily May, who is our president and co-founder and a member of the Street Harassment Advisory Board, sends her regrets for not being able to attend today, but I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. Right2Be was founded in Brooklyn in 2005, and our work addresses all forms of harassment, including in public spaces, in online spaces, and in the workplace. We work to address harassment against all protected classes, including race, religions, gender, and ability. Our work focuses on turning the care we have for each other into simple, creative, and effective actions. Every day, we train hundreds of people to respond to, intervene in, and heal from harassment. We hold people who experience harassment and who want to share their stories with affirmation and support, and we prepare new leaders to create workplaces, schools, and communities that are safer around our city and around the world. In 2018, we worked with legislators to pass the Stop Sexual Harassment in New York City Act, and we advised the council to include the mandate, training for, mandated training for employees. And since then, through partnerships with the New York City Commission on Gender Equity, we've trained over 50,000 New Yorkers in bystander intervention strategies. With our partners around the world, we've trained over 2 million people worldwide in those same strategies. Today, I'm gonna share with you and offer the following recommendations to improve New York City's mandated sexual harassment training. And it's going to be three recommendations. The first one is to issue training length requirements. So we identified some gaps in the current laws, and we think that's a big one.
Your time has expired.
Directly contributes to the quality of learning.
If you could try to do this in 30 seconds, thank you.
Yes. Our second one is expanding harassment to address all protected classes. Recently, the EEOC guidelines were expanded very, very recently, and they were expanded to include intersectional harassment based on multiple characteristics. So we think all protected classes should have mandated harassment training. And then, our third one is expanding the training to address harassment on work commutes and online spaces. Those are two specific public spaces that were also included in those expanded EEOC guidelines. I will share more research and an addendum in-
You could send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you, Iman and Gabriella, for your time. This panel is excused. The next panel is Christopher Leon. And if there's anyone else in the room, all right?
Hello, Chair Lewis. Hello, Chair Wrestler. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. So I want to make this about street harassment, and there's a big issue in the city council about this, because we have a council member that's a chair, that you, Lincoln, that you're protecting Kamala Chera, who is on record of being litigated right now in the, in the court for street harassment of seven women. Now, the problem is that council member like you, Lincoln, you're not condemning anything about this guy at all. And you're taking photos with him, you're giving proclamations, you call him a community leader, and the reason you're doing this is because of Kathy Park Price. And Kathy Park Price runs transportation alternatives, and you're scared of her. You, as a man, need to condemn that man, Kamala Chera, for harassing seven women. Now, you can have this here all you want about street harassment, sexual harassment, but if you, Lincoln Wrestler, are not condemning Kamala Chera for what he did, what he did to those seven women, then there's a big issue here. Now, we all know that you're not going to do anything because you're scared of the, you're scared of Kathy, you want that street, you want Emily Gallagher to get that street PAC endorsement. So, you're going to be silent about this. It's, it's, it's a shame that we have a council member that is leading the Governmental Operations Committee and having this hearing about sexual harassment and street harassment while you have, while you, Lincoln Wrestler, are silent, and you're standing, and you're promoting, and you're championing Kamala Chera. And I'll make this right now clear that people in your district need to vote for Emily Gallagher opponent Athena Simpkins for state assembly. Because when that happens in 2024, and she will be voted out, next year, we're coming for your job, Lincoln. You're going to be voted out too, by somebody else, because once Athena's out, you're out too. You could keep on being silent about Kamala Chera all you want, and I know you don't care, but next year, it's going to be your last year in the city council. So that's all I got to say. Thank you, and enjoy your day.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify that's here? Or via Zoom? Since there are no other members of the public that wish to testify, we will conclude this hearing. Thank you.